Okay, ready to go. Got their mics turned on or off, or however you want to do it. So, welcome to regular city council meeting for January 21st, 2025. Could I hear a roll call, please?
Councilmember Dennehy, absent. Councilmember Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Here.
Councilmember Stein?
Here.
Councilmember Tracy?
Here.
Councilmember Worthington?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Here.
Mayor Troutman?
Here. At this time, I'd like to ask Alicia Swerindt to come forward for the invocation. Would you rise, please?
Yeah, sovereign Lord, we just are so thankful for this city and this community. And, Lord, we invite you into our time. And I just lift up and pray for a new and fresh year in our community, Lord, that you would do new things and that you would give this council wisdom, that you would give our city wisdom. And, Lord, we just thank you for all those that serve here, and we ask you to bless them in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Praise to be praised. I pray to be praised. The United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a reasonable justice for all. Thank you, Alicia. And Alicia's with the Royal Gorge Vineyard. Okay, so we have people, we have, at this time, we have people that would like to address council. And the first one is Aaron. Come on up.
Hello. My name is Aaron Maleko. I live on the 300 block of Macon Avenue, and we own a business on the 300 block of Main Street. I'm talking about the Clock Tower Plaza, and I'm not here to say it's a bad idea. I'm here to say that it would be better at the, where the New Method Laundry was. The Clock Tower Plaza was conceived before we knew New Method Laundry needed to be demolished. Now that New Method Laundry has been demolished, I propose design elements from the Clock Tower Plaza concept and reclaimed materials from the New Method Laundry demolition be used for the New Method Plaza. The 2022-2026 EPA strategic plan has a primary objective to clean up and restore land for productive uses in healthy communities. They state in their strategic plan, thousands of sites across the country have been transformed from abandoned, contaminated, and industrial sites into parks. I believe they would be in support of transforming a dry cleaner into a plaza, possibly even more than a parking lot. I've been told that parking is one of the top issues facing downtown Kenyon City. By putting a parking lot at the New Method Plaza, or at the New Method Site, and then changing Clock Tower Plaza into a parking lot, we will, I mean into a plaza, we will have the same amount of parking spots until it's time to take the New Method Site and make it available for development. And then we're going to be net minus one parking lot. I've also been told people don't like to park and walk more than a block or two from their destination. Having a plaza at New Method results in better parking lot distribution, alternating parks, plazas, parking lots, and businesses in a better way than Clock Tower Plaza would. And there should be an attachment that shows kind of how those are staggered. New Method Plaza would enjoy more pedestrian traffic than Clock Tower Plaza, as pedestrians would walk through New Method Plaza to go from Main Street to the parking lot at 316 Macon. Moving parking from Clock Tower to New Method moves parking further away from too busy restaurants. It's my belief that leaving Clock Tower parking in place and developing New Method Plaza would be a large cost savings over replacing Clock Tower parking with the plaza and develop New Method into parking, but I encourage the city to do a cost benefit analysis to compare these two scenarios. Clock Tower parking is closer to Highway 50, and will get visitors parked sooner. I believe a place to park is more of a draw to Main Street than a plaza. Last, I believe traffic flow in and out of Clock Tower parking would be less disruptive on Main Street than New Method parking, but I encourage the city to perform a traffic analysis comparing these two scenarios. That's all I have.
So, you're wanting to do a Clock Tower-type activity on the New Method Site as compared to making just a parking lot where the Clock Tower is?
Basically, everything that we kind of envisioned, all the design elements that we had for Clock Tower Plaza, pick them up and move them to where New Method used to be. Leave the parking lot as it is at Clock Tower. We can improve on it later. Right now, it functions as a parking lot, and I know that's going to change as we change that intersection that's, you know, just about to happen. But have the plaza at New Method, and then when it comes time in a few years, when the, it's environmentally clear, or when the contamination is at an acceptable level, it has to be made available for development. So then, worst case, we're going to lose a plaza and not another parking lot. And some of the materials that, from what I understand, we saved some of the materials from the demolition of New Method Laundry. We can use some of those as planners, benches, and that sort of thing, and you could put just crushed granite gravel on the ground and have a plaza there, and I think that's going to be a lot cheaper than building a parking lot. But I'm not sure.
Okay, I saw a plan for years about what was going to go in from prior councils on the Clock Tower.
Right.
And you just want to scrap that and...
Well, that's what I'm saying. That was all before we knew that New Method Laundry was going to have to be torn down. So every few months, I've been bringing this up, and I've been told, well, it's not time to talk about it yet. And it's not time to talk about it yet. And I think while this is still all on paper, I think this is probably my last opportunity to really push this idea of thinking about putting that plaza at New Method instead.
Okay. Council, any questions? Okay, this was yours. We all got one.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for that, Aaron. Emily?
I was just going to comment that, you know, we certainly have heard your suggestion before tonight. Appreciate the additional information tonight, and we do have it on the agenda later, so just wanted to be sure you're aware that it is on the agenda tonight to authorize the city administrator to sign a professional services agreement for a final design of the Clock Tower Plaza. So I'm sure we'll have more discussion at that point on the agenda.
Amy?
Thank you, Mayor Troutman. I was going to make a similar point and inquire as to if Mr. Maleko was planning to stay around for that portion of the evening. Wonderful. Thank you. Looking forward to a robust conversation.
Okay. Thank you all. Mike Sturica? Come on up. You want to talk about the consent agenda? Is it C and G and Item 4?
No, it's Item 11, which is the...
Oh.
Clock Tower, so I'll hold off on that until that item comes up.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm Mike Sturica. I live at 676 North 19th Street. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for letting me address you tonight. Item C is a bid for pumping toilet vaults. I assume that's in our mountain parks. The city owns two vacuum machines. One is a multi-hundred thousand dollar vehicle that they just bought for stormwater, for cleaning drains. It can be used for cleaning the toilet. They also have a portable one that's on a trailer. I can't see the city spending $26,000 to have a couple of toilets pumped when they get to do it themselves. And Item G is an award for, a bid for improvements to the intersection of Central and Orchard. I live close to this intersection. I use it quite often. That intersection isn't as safe, as unsafe as people make it. The, it's sign, the flashing lights on the stop sign, I can't see that a million-dollar project, 100,000 of which comes from city coffers, is going to make that intersection any safer. You can't put up a turn lane, more flashing lights, and fix stupid, that the people just run the stop signs. And you, and that's proven by the number of accidents that happen at the signaled intersections on Highway 50. And the sore spot in my craw, but the number of new accidents that are now occurring in the middle of the block that never happened before the median was put in. So I would, I would urge council to relook at that. I did also notice that there's a 29-page agreement. There's 18 exhibits attached to that agreement, and there's no picture. I don't know if council's seen what's proposed, but there is no design or picture of what the council is approving a million-dollar project for. And then I'll wait on Item 11.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions of Mike on council? Amy?
Not of Mike, but I would be interested in, in city staff comments on the questions
Leo, do you mind coming up? You may have a better answer for the equipment.
Looking at the septic bid, that one is from Rex, and it is, as Mike mentioned, that is for mountain parks. We do have some vault toilets around on the Riverwalk Trail down near, oh, the river station takeout there. So we've got a number of vault toilets around that get pumped, as well as some, like sand oil interceptors at some of the buildings that get pumped out routinely. In terms of using our stormwater equipment for that, I would have to check. I don't know that we can, because pumping out a vault toilet contaminates it with E coli from human fecal waste, and I don't know that we can have that in our stormwater truck that we use to clean out our other stormwater things that aren't E coli contaminated without risking spreading E coli around other areas of town. For the Central and Orchard, that project was a competitive grant application through CDOT. The project envisions adding a center-left turn lane on Central at Orchard, and then adjusting the flashing stoplights to an overhead flashing beacon, not a full traffic signal, but just trying to get, as Mike pointed out, a lot of people run that light. I don't know why. I can't answer for why they do that. It is one of the highest accident intersections in the city that is not on US 50, so it's something we're trying to make some improvements on and drive those accident numbers down a little bit.
Could I ask, is the reason why we don't have a drawing on it because it, it's pretty far out from the design stage? There would be quite a bit of public comment and design work that would need to go in before it's ready to go out for a bid or anything like that?
Yeah, absolutely. Right, and it's very conceptual at this point. If the agreement is accepted, we would look to have design work begin on that project this year, and I believe those are not funds that are available for us for construction until 2027, if I recall. So it is still probably at least two years from any construction expenses.
And Leo, the, on the E coli, we do have a situation where city stormwater does enter our irrigation ditches, so I don't think we want that on our vegetables. So that's, I mean, we do know that, that they intermingle with irrigation water. Thank you.
Any questions? Yeah, I have not seen a design. Will there be one? If this was approved, is it, is just, can it go farther, or can we stop it? Because we don't care for the design.
If we accept the CDOT agreement, you know, we're accepting to spend their dollars, so we would have to go into the termination clauses of that agreement, which I can't recall right off the top of my head, but we would potentially have to pay any grant dollars back that we used if we did not fulfill the project. So the way we set this project up in the city budget was that the city would fund the design separately, so we would take it through design with our own local dollars before we spent any grant dollars. The grant dollars would not be used until construction. Gives us a little more freedom to use a low-bid vendor that we prefer rather than using a qualifications-based selection that runs through CDOT and meeting all their requirements for that. So we would still have opportunity to stop the project if we wanted to, without, before we expended any grant dollars, I guess, to answer your question.
And CDOT was the one that, did we ask for this, or did CDOT decide they wanted to do it?
We asked for it. It was an open grant solicitation by CDOT. We submitted two projects for consideration, and they selected this one.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Sturica?
I have one other question. City have the right-of-way to those turn lanes. It's a pretty narrow road right there.
It'll be very narrow, but I believe we do have enough right-of-way. The lanes won't be quite as wide as they are now. It'll be down to like 11-foot lanes on Central, whereas they're about 14-foot right now. There'll still be plenty of room, I think, to make those turns through there.
Any questions?
Yes. I believe that your, the packet addresses that this project was submitted for potential state grant dollars before the multimodal master plan was approved. However, if I'm recalling the multimodal master plan correctly, it does call for multimodal transportation along Central, including a sidewalk, if I'm not mistaken. Given that this project would, proposed project would already reduce lane widths from 14 to 11 feet, how would that impact those, that strategic planning that's also been done?
That would, some of that would have to be determined once we had a survey and had a real accurate prediction of what's there. I'd say that right now, the lanes are about 14 to 15 feet wide, which is 28 to 30 foot of pavement. Three 11-foot lanes is 33 foot, so it's not a substantial widening over what's there of the road itself, which should leave room for curb and gutter and sidewalks along it. This is not a long project along Central Avenue. I mean, to add turn lanes is 600 or 700 foot of Central Avenue that would be impacted. You do have sidewalks, I believe, on both sides of Orchard, north and south of that intersection that we'd be able to tie into, but this wouldn't extend a lot of sidewalk along Central Avenue.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Leo. Then, any, any council members, do I have any comments or excursions you're going on you want to tell us about? Emily?
We're on number six now, right?
Yes, we're on six.
I have a couple of things. I wanted to mention that Lincoln Park Cotter Community Advisory Group had its monthly meeting this afternoon, and the community members of the community advisory group are going to be submitting tonight, and we read it today at the meeting, a letter to the state and federal regulatory agencies asking that the Environmental Protection Agency do a work takeover at the site, because we continue to see delays and deadline extensions, and you just, you cannot see the end of this road at the rate things are going. So I just wanted to let everyone know that that request has been made. We don't know what the response yet will be to that request. And in other words, it would be the Environmental Protection Agency, if they said yes to doing this, they would be the ones to produce all of the documents that tell what kind of environmental testing is still needed, where it's still needed, how it's going to occur, rather than having Cotter Corporation do all of those documents. Then the other thing I wanted to say was just commending the Kenyon City Police Department again for the work that the police do. I don't see any of them here tonight, but, you know, pretty quick work, it seems to me as a layperson in identifying suspect in the bank robbery, for example, and of course, there's many, many other things that they do every day, and I, I just think it's worth for all of us from time to time to talk about how much we appreciate, appreciate law enforcement in general and the work that they do. That's all.
Thank you, Emily. Amy?
Thank you, Mayor Troutman. Unfortunately, due to a change in my day job, travel schedule, I will not be able to adequately represent city council on our Public Art Committee, which meets a week of the month where we don't have our city council meetings, and I think I'll be out of town for most of the meetings this year. So I've unfortunately let, had to let the Public Art Committee know that I won't be able to serve in one of the two city council seats on, on that board moving forward. I had also mentioned that to city council via email and just wanted to see if someone else on city council might be interested in filling that second slot, serving alongside Councilwoman Andrea Stein.
Would anybody like to volunteer? Or we could go to voluntold, too. Any volunteers? Would you like to consider it? Because we would like to have someone else on that, from council, there's two seats for that.
Just a question, since the two boards that I represent are, it's pretty easy. One is Planning Commission, and one is Chamber of Commerce, but I don't know that I have any good input for the Arts Committee. I don't, it's just not something, I mean, if someone else is willing to do it, otherwise, I probably have the easiest schedule of everyone here.
No, I probably do.
I also, though, would posit, I mean, public art, we have so many wonderful folks on that board representing the artistic point of view, and having somebody representing the planning point of view and the economic driving force that public art can be, could be really valuable, not to in any way pressure you into it or to suggest that someone else may not be interested. But I do think public art belongs to everyone and that everyone's voice has a place at that table.
So at the corner of my eye, I saw Kathy raise her hand. Is that a volunteer thing?
Almost.
Oh, well, okay.
Question is first, when, when do you normally meet?
The last week of the month. The last week of the month.
Okay. Okay, well, I know nothing. I have no creativity, but I've got a big mouth, so I would be glad to volunteer to be on that.
Okay. So we, we're not going to comment on your mouth, but drawing that conclusion, we'll then appoint Kathy Worthington to the board, and thank you so much. So, thank you. John, did you?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind everybody, a week from tomorrow, 2 o'clock, in these chambers is the next Water Committee meeting.
Mayor?
Let's go right ahead.
In the, in the last week and a half, I represent the city's, oops, sorry. I represent the city's shares on three of the ditch boards that the city owns, water shares in, and that's the South Canyon Ditch and the Dewise-Dye Ditch, and today, the hydraulic ditch met. And just a quick update, the ditches are having growing pains because we've become more of an urban, urban town than the old ranch town that we used to be, and so they're having a lot of challenges with getting people who own shares to actually support them, pay their dues on those shares every year, and some of them just abandon them or ignore them, or people buy a house that has shares with it and they ignore it. So it's, it's become a problem, like they'll, they have some places, their 20 to 40% are not paying their dues. So they've been instituting, in some instances, they have to increase their fees, and in others, the hydraulic is, changed their bylaws today so that they can, when people don't pay their dues for a year, then they can take over the shares, sell them, and then just charge an administrative fee, and whatever's left after that, it's, it goes to the original share owner. But they can't afford, they're going to sell those shares because they can't afford to let them just sit there. So that, that's one thing. And then another thing is 811 through the state has mandated that the ditches have to participate, and 811 is where, when someone's going to dig in a certain area, that all the utilities have to say, you know, where, where their utilities are and mark them, but there's no money, of course, John, for it. They, it's a mandate, an unfunded mandate, and so they're struggling with that. And the problem is, the state has said, if someone digs and you don't, and you're not registered with 811, and they hit your, your line, it's underground, you're liable. The ditch is liable, and the contractor can sue them. So they, if you're not on 811, and so they thought, okay, well, how many 811 calls could there possibly be? So the Oil Creek Ditch, which is right across from Town Hall, they started last April with 811, and they've had over 100 calls in 2024. So this, it's a burden, and they have to be part of the county GIS system. The county has really stepped up and helped the ditches with the, getting onto the GIS systems. But it's, it's a challenge going forward. These, even though we're not a ranch community anymore totally, we're more urban, we still need that water. We wouldn't have these trees if it weren't for those ditches, because this is a high-arid plateau. So this is something that, you know, going forward, we just have to keep watch on. Thanks.
Thank you, Andrea. Kathy, did you speak, or was it, you raised your hand and I volunteered you, right? Okay. So the next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda? No? Oh, we have Vision Committee meeting Wednesday at 5:00 here, and we'll be talking about the Police Department Statistics and also about the gun, carrying gun, or concealed guns, or handguns rule law.
Yes, sir.
Is that it? Anything else?
Do have a proclamation honoring Mayor Werner Marquin.
Oh, you're, is that then how you pronounce it?
I think so.
I don't have all of it. Only have one page of it. Is that all it is? I saw that, and it was so long, I couldn't memorize it. Okay. How did you pronounce that name? John?
I said Werner Marquin.
Verver Marquin. Okay. We have representatives from Kenyon City of the Rotary Club, Linda Carlson, going to Guatemala, and this proclamation is honoring Mayor Werner Marquin of Atencinago, Atencinago, Guatemala, and is recognizing his far-reaching support and partnership with local leaders, Elmer Ariga, and several Rotary International Clubs. Whereas the peaceful, volcanic, high-altitude region of Atencinago, Guatemala is home to a vibrant and resilient, resilient community striving for improved health, education, and quality of life, and Mayor Werner has demonstrated extraordinary vision and dedication to his community, fostering collaboration and supporting initiatives that address critical needs, and whereas the Rotary Club of Kenyon City, Colorado, also with the Rotary Clubs of Arvada, Colorado, Big Fork, Montana, Columbia Falls, Montana, and Evergreen, Montana, has partnered with Atencinago community for over a decade through the Buenos Venicios Program, building friendships and implementing impactful projects, and whereas under this partnership, volunteers will now introduce a program of sustainable, life-changing trainings for village teachers in sewing reusable menstrual pads to instruct their students so that these young women will create essential supplies and promote dignity, education, and empowerment, and whereas the collaborative efforts have also resulted in the installation of low-cost gravity-filtered water systems in homes, schools, and neighborhoods, leading to remarkable health improvements throughout the region, and whereas the more education time for girls programming originated in Kenyon City has been instrumental in supporting menstrual health and hygiene management, as well as the implementation of a Wash, of ASH curriculum aligned with UNICEF and WHO, World Health Organization standards, ensuring sustainable and far- and far-reaching benefits for students and educators in Atencinago. Now, whereas I, Preston Troutman, Mayor of Canyon City, Colorado, on behalf of our community, do hereby recognize and commend Mayor Werner Marquin of Atencinago, Guatemala, for his outstanding commitment to his people and his partnership in advancing health, education, and opportunity for all through international cooperation, and I signed it today. So, thank you. We'll give that to Rotary and Linda. Okay? All right. So, on the Consent Agenda, there's two items that I want to talk about. John, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say a little bit about that program. I have heard different presentations on the program that Dr. Linda Carlson has pioneered, and the issue is, is that young women in the education system for a week or so a month are prohibited from attending school activities without the proper menstrual
Supplies.
Pads. So, but, so it's really life-changing for those students, because they don't have to take a week out of every month to not go to school, and so it's really a great program.
Yes, I heard about Rotary as well, it is. And thank you, thank you to the Rotary Association and to Linda. Wish them well. She's down in Guatemala now, as I understand, so I imagine she's not freezing, as we are here. So, moving on, so there are two items I wanted to talk about on the Consent Agenda. Do I pull them off, or do I ask you to review them, or what do I do here? What would you like me to do?
I can read the agenda, and then if you want to identify those items, and then have the motion to, whoever makes the motion would have to make the motion to pull them off and add them to the regular agenda.
Okay. I'd ask then the City Administrator to review the Consent Agenda and the items.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of Council. Item 8A is to approve the minutes for the regular City Council meeting on January 6th, the General Government meeting on January 8th, and the special meeting on January 7th will open house. 8B awards bid 06-25 tree pruning, removal, and stump grinding service to tall timberous tree and shrub service in an amount not to exceed $100,000. 8C awards bid 07-25 septic tank and vault toilet pumping and portable restroom solutions to Johnstone in an amount not to exceed $26,000. 8D awards bid 8-25 solid waste disposal site to Twin Enviro of Penrose in an amount not to exceed $3,000. 8E awards bid 09-25 solid waste removal service to Twin Enviro of Penrose in an amount not to exceed $3,500. 8F authorizes the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation for Project Number 25893, Third Street Connector Project. 8G authorizes the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation for Project Number 26760 for the Central and Orchard Intersection Improvements. 8H authorizes the City Administrator to sign a professional services agreement with Vivid Engineering and Jessit Consulting for 2025 materials testing. 8I authorizes the City Administrator to sign a professional services agreement with Vivid Engineering for contract consolidation. 8J is to receive and file monthly budget summary for November 2024. 8K is to receive and file cash dispersments to ratify, and 8L is to receive and file cash dispersments and P-card dispersments.
Were there any additions or corrections? Amy?
No additions or corrections, but I also wanted to talk more about 8I, so would ask that when a motion is made, perhaps that one could be pulled off as well. And then I also had a comment with regard to 8L, which are our P-card purchases. I understand that one of the P-card purchases includes late fees and tolls, and would just ask, or would commend the city for reviewing its finance policy to ensure that if city employees are incurring late fees, that the city is not the one paying those late fees, and also that we encourage folks not to use toll roads unless they really are critically necessary. So thank you for that work in response to those charges. Thanks.
Absolutely. So you're wishing to pull I off the Consent Agenda?
Yes.
I would like to pull F and G off the Consent Agenda as well. Anybody else?
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So, this is just kind of discussion, but the, on our financial reports, have you heard anything about the bag tax the city is supposed to be receiving now after January 1st? What that is looking like or anything like that?
I can get more information for you. Yep.
Thank you.
Then, I would ask for a motion with regard to the discussion that F and G and I would be removed at this time from the Consent Agenda, so I'd ask for a motion from Council.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda and moving items F, G, and I to the regular agenda.
Second?
Motion's been made in second, are there any discussions on that motion? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hemrick?
Aye.
Okay. Should we talk about those items, or should we go with the administrative part? Okay, let's do that. Right now, Amy, would you like to start off with your I? I, I.
Sure, I would be happy to start with I. So I understand that the city's desire with this is to consolidate essentially three separate contracts into one for ease of management. No issues or concerns, obviously, with contract consolidation and enlightening the administrative load on our city employees. I am concerned, though, because as far as I understand it, the contracts that we currently have with them do not require any escalation for inflationary purposes, and we are proposing to unilaterally give them an extra $2,230 out of the goodness of our hearts, and I don't think that that's an appropriate use of our taxpayers' dollars. I realize that it's relatively low in dollar value, and I realize that, you know, this contract was entered into about five years ago, and that inflation has been significant since then. However, they entered into this contract, they're a private entity, this is a relatively small contract that they have with us, they have other contracts that are worth much more. I don't see any reason why we should give them additional funds from our taxpayers that we don't need to. Thanks.
Would you like to comment, Leo?
Yeah, I can answer to that. As Amy mentioned, this does consolidate a number of existing contracts into one. One of those contracts dates back to, I believe, 2020, where we awarded Vivid Engineering Materials Testing Work on a two-way project along Harding Avenue between 5th and 9th. That project has been delayed for roughly five years while we looked for means to fund the water main replacement that's needed as a part of that project. We're looking to do that now, currently in that drinking water revolving fund that we've talked about. As bringing this forward, we did, they did ask, and I did agree that we would bring it forward with an escalation on that portion only, which is five years old. I believe the original was $14,000 for the materials testing on that portion of the project, and they're requesting to $16,000 and change on that, so.
Is it fair to say, though, that they would complete the terms of the contract that they are bound by at the original cost? That this is a request that they're making that we do not have to honor? Am I understanding the memo correctly? Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, there is an existing contract in place for that amount. I'm sure they're, without looking at it, I'm sure that they could terminate that if they so chose, you know, in the same regard, that we could terminate that contract under our terms. I'd have to review what those are, you know, if it's a unilaterally terminatable contract or if they can terminate that after five years, but I don't know that they would protest too hard if we said, no, we're not going to amend that price.
Okay. I guess I would want more information on what the termination clauses are. I mean, I realize that in regard to the city's overall budget, we're talking about a fairly minimal amount of money, but I never want to spend our taxpayer dollars when we don't have to. So I would want to know what the termination clauses in that contract are in order to feel comfortable voting for this. Thanks.
Leo, how do those rates compare to what we're currently contracting them at?
I don't know that I compared it hours per hour, but essentially, it's, you know, capturing what they're paying their employees an hour to come and do this work has escalated over the five years. What it costs them to make a set of concrete cylinders and test it has gone up over the five years, and this attempts to capture that.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I guess the question perhaps should be asked, what if we did not approve this, if we voted this down, what would be the result? I mean, the, do we, is there, tell me a little bit about the downside if we voted this down.
The biggest downside for us is just the administrative burden of keeping track of these expenses between three different contracts and amendments, and making sure we're not exceeding budgets or, you know, letting the slope slip out of place. It's a burden on staff, essentially.
Thank you.
Emily?
And just to be sure I understood correctly, it was not the fault of the company at all that this got dragged out four or five years, right? It was the city looking for funding to finish the project, as you mentioned, and so it's, I don't want to penalize the company for something that was not their fault.
That's correct. It was a city decision to delay the project.
Are there any comments? What occurs here, that we put it back on the agenda, or someone vote to accept that, or what?
We would need a motion on the item.
On that item? Okay. So then, Emily, go ahead.
I'll do the motion. I move that we approve Item 8I as submitted, authorizing the City Administrator to sign a professional services agreement with Vivid Engineering for contract consolidation.
Second?
Second, Kathy, thank you. Are there any discussions on that motion? Comments? Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Nay.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Hemrick?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So, comes down to the two that I asked to come off, and I have no problem, Leo or Ryan, with, I think with that. I do have a problem with being asked to sign something that I will not do. You know that, and it's not ours. Let me read this to you, let the public hear this. So, it has nothing to do with construction of streets or anything else, and they're weaseling this into here, and because if you say you authorize the mayor to sign the contract, the agreement, I won't sign this. I'll sign the contract, I won't sign this. So here's what it says, this is local agency certification for access to PII. PII is Personal Identifying Information Through Database or Authorized Network. Then it says, "On behalf of the local agency hereby certify, under the penalty of perjury, that the local agency has not and will not use or disclose any personal identifying information as defined in 24-74, CRS 24-74-102." I have a copy of that law, CRS, "for the purpose of investigating or participating in cooperating with or assisting federal immigration enforcement, including the enforcement of civil immigration law and Illegal Immigration and Immigration Responsibility Act." In caps, that is a law which is codified in 8 USC 1325 and 1326 unless required to do so to comply with federal or state law or to comply with a court-issued subpoena, warrant, or order. Now, I do have that Illegal Immigration Reform Act right here, so this is nothing more in my opinion but political theater. I'm not going to sign it. So if you authorize me to do this, I will sign the contract. I will not sign this. This will not bear my name. I have a problem with this. What we're saying is here, we're not going to cooperate with our government, and it says local agency. You define in the law, I can define, a local agency is defined as a state agency. We're not a state agency. That's one thing that irritates me. A state agency means a department or the executive branch or state government. We're not an agency. Nor can I affirm that anybody in this organization has not identified or worked with them before, and that's what it says here, that this, I, under penalty of perjury, me, hereby certify that the local agency has not and will not use or disclose. Can't certify that. I don't know. Can you? And I'm the one that would be subject to perjury. I'm not going to do it. So, that's all I have to say. If you wish to go ahead and approve these, F and G, bear in mind, I will sign the contract, I will not sign that. I find this offensive. I want the public to understand that. This damn well irritates me. This is political theater by our state. That's embarrassing. So, Emily?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I, sorry, I had trouble following what you were reading from. Is there a digital page for council members to refer to?
Yeah, it's called Exhibit C in the contract. It's in your contract.
Can you tell me what the digital page number is?
No, I can't, I have my computer on. It's, if you look in there, I think it's KK or CC or something like that.
175, okay. It would just help if we could get our eyes on what you're referring to.
Here's the page, I copied it.
Well, yeah, well.
Okay, so.
Yeah, it is 175.
Can we, just to continue my question on this, can we just, as part of the motions for both of these items, F and G, can we authorize someone different to sign this particular document? Doesn't, on the document itself, if I have the right one up, it doesn't say mayor.
I would oppose that. I would oppose anyone from this government signing this crap, in my opinion.
Well, we don't all share the same opinion, and I'd like to see this.
Then you vote, then you vote for it. Then you vote no, and the rest can vote yes or whatever else. I will not sign it. And I will oppose, I'd be very upset if someone from this government signs that.
Well, we have votes, and we'll see how it comes out. I mean, we want to just stop what we do with CDOT, or, I mean, what's the bigger issue here?
The issue is, we have a contract. This has nothing to do with building roads. Absolutely nothing to build with roads.
I assume it's standard material that they?
I don't care standard, it could be whatever. Could be toilet paper, so I wasn't concerned. So, John?
I didn't push my button yet.
Oh, all right. I'll just cool off a minute. So, that's where I'm at. If you all would like to vote on F and G, I think that's a proper procedure, or you want to wait and read it, you know where I stand. Yes, Amy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Troutman. I guess I have a couple of questions. One for Mr. Evans, sorry, Director Evans. Do, what's our timeline on this? When do we have to make a decision? Is there more time for the rest of Council to consider what Mayor Troutman has brought forward this evening? Or are these funds in jeopardy if we do not act this evening?
No, these funds are not in jeopardy.
Okay, so we have time to reflect?
Yes.
And then, second, I guess, has our attorney reviewed this particular attachment and have any comments on it? I guess, the way that I read the end of that sentence is that if you are required to provide the information as stated by federal or state law, that you may do so, but I'm reading it just with these, the mayor's reflections in mind at this moment, so I'm wondering if you have had a chance to further analyze and review it.
We've reviewed it, it's been discussed with CDOT, they will not remove it, and my understanding, and Leo can clarify this, is that in order for these projects to operate, you have to have, they require you to have access to at least two databases. which is what this is covering, the access to those databases.
But this states that if federal or state law requires you to provide the information, you may do so.
Yes, there's an exception there.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I was reading that very long lawyerly sentence correctly.
It says, "With a court-issued subpoena or warrant."
Those are two separate things.
Obviously, I know that.
No, it says, "To comply with federal or state law or to comply with a court-issued subpoena warrant or order."
So it's multiple exclusions.
So it doesn't require a subpoena or a warrant? If federal law states that you must provide this information to law enforcement, that is what federal law states, and you may provide it to law enforcement. Is that an accurate understanding?
Yeah, if that's what federal law requires, then that would be accurate, yes.
Thank you.
Then why does it say, "Won't cooperate with"? That's what it says.
Maybe it would have to be an official inquiry and not just, "Hey, Mr. Mayor," or, "Hey, Mr. Administrator, I need some information."
It says, "Has not, will not, that some agency prior to me, I'm certifying under perjury, penalty of perjury, that the local agency has not and will not use or disclose any personal, PII, any personal identifying information for the purpose of investigation, for participating in or cooperating with or assisting federal immigration enforcement." So I don't know if it's that easy, this because they ask. It says here, "I won't cooperate with them." And furthermore, that I would have, when I sign this, if I sign this under threat of perjury, that, I can certify that. I don't know if anybody has, any local authority has in the past, and that's what it says.
So, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. So if a person were to sign this on behalf of the city, an authorized person were to sign this on behalf of the city, and the state alleged that they had disclosed personal identifying information, they would have to defend themselves in court. Would the city pay for the attorney? Would you be the attorneys on that?
Well, I'll answer your second question first, which is, it depends. You may have insurance that covers that. And so we are not your insurance defense counsel. You have separate insurance defense counsel that your insurer hires to represent you. So that's the answer to the second question. Yeah, if the state sued over it and actually went to court and all of that, I mean, knock on wood, I think that's very unlikely to happen. I think what the state's going to do is say, "We want our funds back." They're going to use that hammer. That's a lot easier than bringing prosecution for perjury or some type of other kind of case.
So it's against federal law to interfere with the federal enforcement of immigration laws?
I am not a federal immigration lawyer.
Unless required to do so. Unless required to do so, to comply with federal or state law.
I'm talking about before that.
Yeah, but that whole thing, the next last sentence is, unless required to do so, comply with federal or state law or comply with a court-issued subpoena warrant or order.
Yeah, it's like unless, you've got a get-out-of-jail-free card at the end, unless required to do so.
Right, so if, let's say the state said, "We think that, you know, someone provided information in violation of that first part of that, okay? And that person says, "No, no, no. I had a request from a federal agency. It's under this law, and it says I have to comply. That's my defense." So that's the exclusion. So the first part is the baseline, and then there's several exclusions that follow after that, unless, you know. So you'd have to fall into one of those. But that's how we would defend that action if that were to happen.
As an individual, I would never sign this. Under penalty of perjury, I would never sign this.
And that's fine.
Emily?
I think I'll just say briefly that I don't personally have a problem with this, and I don't think that this form should put these award or these authorizations, these IGAs, into any kind of jeopardy. I would hope that there is someone associated with the city who could sign this and meet what CDOT or whoever needs under this. I just don't see the problem here. I don't have a problem with the wording of this, and I'm happy to make a motion when we're ready for that.
Okay, I just want to be known, want the public to know, if there's anybody listening, I will not sign this. This is nothing more than you're holding our tax dollars hostage, blackmailing us into signing a form that I find repugnant. It has nothing to do with building a street. This is political opera. So if you want to go ahead and pass this, go right ahead. But I will not sign it. So you find someone else to do it. I'll ask for a motion. Emily?
I move that we approve items, I think it's 8F and 8G as submitted.
Do you want to second it? Amy?
I have discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I was waiting for you to get a second and to ask for a discussion.
Okay, I'm looking for a second.
I'll second, so we can have discussion.
Discussion.
No, my discussion was not specific to Exhibit C. It was more, what is the process for determining a way forward? What are the termination clauses? How do we ensure that we are using taxpayer dollars wisely? I understand that for, I guess it would now be 9G, that we would be front-loading the city's contribution. What is the case with nine, well, I don't even know what the numbers would be. What is the case with the Third Street Connector? What does this look like? What will our process look like? You know, I certainly don't want to spend $100,000 on design if we aren't actually planning to build. So we'd just be curious for a little bit more information on the actual process around both of these projects. Thanks.
Really, the schedule for these projects would be that if these are approved tonight, we would go and begin design work. We would have to issue an RFP, come back to this board with a recommendation for a professional services agreement likely for someone to do the engineering design work on these. We're, in reality, probably at least three to four, maybe six months away from any expenses or real work beginning on these projects. So this is really just the first phase of that, is accepting the agreement with CDOT. They obligate the funds to us for these projects, and then we take it through design. And as I mentioned, I think the Third Street Connector project is 2026. Construction funds is the earliest we can expend that. And the Central and Orchard is 2027. Construction funds is the earliest we can expend that.
So these are projects that would greatly impact a lot of people in our community. How would you envision having a public process around the design to ensure that those perspectives and the challenges thereof are fully heard at an early phase during those processes?
You know, the Third Street Connector has had a lot of work gone into it on some of the previous planning efforts from the River, Arkansas River Master Plan and the Comprehensive Plan. I would say when we structure the RFP, we would include a public input session into that early in the design and have an open house or survey or some other type meeting to kind of square up some of those design features like we've done on other projects. Central and Orchard, we'd probably do the same thing. It's a little, I'd say, a little less, you know, freedom of what we can and can't do there. You know, we're building lanes and curb and sidewalk. It's not as open to public interpretation sometime, but we would still have a facet of public input on that one as well early in the design phase. But it'd be part of those RFPs with an engineering firm.
Thank you.
Okay, John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I sign this, what this does is this takes away my ability, if I know of a criminal illegal alien, to identify them to federal law enforcement agencies. And subjects me to perjury, charges of perjury, if I sign this. And that is what we're dealing with here. The state desiring to be a sanctuary state. And so if I sign this as an official and as an individual, identify a criminal illegal alien and notify Customs and Border Patrol, then I'm subject to perjury penalties.
As a private citizen?
Yes.
No, that is not what that says. It says the local agency, which is the city. So if you're acting in your official capacity as a city council member and you've somehow obtained information, then yes. But if you're just a private citizen, this doesn't apply to you.
Okay, so if I, as a city council person, identify an illegal alien and identify them to immigration enforcement, then I am subject to perjury charges.
I think that's going to be pretty hard, because that's not part of your official duties as a council member for this city. It's just not. So I just think that's going to be a really hard line to toe. I just don't think that's what's going to happen.
The, so, I understand what you're telling me.
Okay.
The problem is, we've got, we have a state that wants to be a sanctuary state, and I think that's totally out of order.
I completely understand where some council members are coming from. And it's your call whether you sign these agreements or not, okay? There's nothing, there's no doubt that. I'm just not sure that fight is for here. I mean, that's a legislative fight, right? This is coming from a state law passed by the legislature. CDOT is following the directions of the legislature and putting this in their contracts. This is not a CDOT agency creation.
And I would comment that it's like Mark Twain said, "How do you lose your freedoms slowly at first and then all at once?" And this is a way to put this on that path.
It says, John, it says at the end, the very end, "Unless required to do so to comply with federal or state law." Federal law. If ICE shows up, that's federal law. And then the first part of that is off the books. Because it says, "Unless required to do so to comply with federal or state law." So you're given an out. If you personally, you don't, you can comply with federal law.
It's not an out. I have to be complying with federal law. I cannot act on my own to identify illegal aliens. That's the issue. Not whether eventually some federal agent tells me, "Hey, do you have any knowledge?"
But it's not our job as council persons to do that. It's what you do as a private citizen. It's different from what we do as council.
I'm sorry, I cannot support this.
Okay. Kathy?
My question is, is, I can appreciate both of your thoughts. If we, as a council, agree that we want to go ahead with this, who can be authorized to sign this?
Any one of you and staff.
Okay, so if you want to punt, we can still get the money, get the jobs going if one of us or somebody on staff, as far as administrator, whoever, agrees to sign this.
And just, Ryan can sign the contract, too. That's fine.
Emily?
Well, I think what I was going to say has now been pretty much covered, and I just think we need to move forward with this. And I, you know, there is a motion and a second. And I just think we need to try to separate out our personal political beliefs from city business here. And it is, we need to move forward with city business. It is not my job, and I don't think it's the job of any of us up here, to decide how federal immigration enforces or doesn't enforce the law. And I personally, just for the record, there's no way on earth that I would feel I have the knowledge to decide who's documented and who's not documented in this country. And I don't want to see us interject the city into that.
Okay, Amy?
Thank you. Attorney Sellers, could we go back for just a moment? You had mentioned that this is state law, that CDOT is required to attach this to all of these sorts of contracts. Is that, I'm not familiar with the provisions of that specific state law. Will this essentially be the case for any state dollars coming to us?
If the contract requires, and again, Leo, correct me if I'm wrong, but if the contract requires access to these databases, then yes. If the contract doesn't require access to these databases that CDOT has, then no. That's what's triggering it, is this required access. So if there was, you just got grant, you know, you just got grant money for federal funding or state funding for a project, and you didn't have to work within CDOT's databases, this would not be in the contract at all.
Is there a reason why we need to work within CDOT's databases for these two projects? And if so, what is that reason?
They require prevailing wage, and CDOT only allows us to do prevailing wage through their online database system. We used to be able to do them via paper, require paper records of prevailing wage. All CDOT contracts require them to be submitted electronically, and they maintain and manage that database.
And there's no opt-out provision for doing it paper-based?
Not that I've been able to find.
Okay, thank you. So we wouldn't anticipate this exhibit being attached to state dollars from any other agency because they likely would not have this prevailing wage issue? Or potentially, we're looking at this across the board for any state money that we get moving forward?
Not likely. I mean, if you're talking about an energy mineral impact grant from DOLA, I have not seen this in those contracts.
Okay.
We've only seen these in CDOT contracts.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. The only thing I have to say is that you says authorize the mayor. I will not sign it. So you best designate someone else in that period. And I'm going to see if the public, what they think of it, too, you know, the people that vote for us. I just want to see what they think about it. So you go right ahead and do what you want to do. The mayor's not going to sign this. I will not sign the PII. All right? So go ahead and vote. Do you call a roll, please?
Sorry, point of order. Should, would Councilwoman Tracy like to amend her motion to know who would be signing it? Or no?
I don't think we have to specify that, do we? Unless our attorney says that we should specify it.
Sorry, I would specify it if you're going to have the administrator do it.
Okay, then I would amend the motion to say that this particular part of this contract would be signed, or the whole contract, whichever works better, would be signed by our city administrator instead of the mayor. And if the second agrees.
Thank you. Yes, I second. I second it again. Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmisher?
Aye.
Councilmember Stein?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracy?
Aye.
Councilmember Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Nay.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go to the city administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You have a written report in your packet as, well, we've got Leo still here. I did provide an update regarding the Rhodes Avenue Stormwater Project. We're getting short on time in order to act, in order to do our project this, within the timeframe that we have. Atmos is still working on their project to move their natural gas line under the railroad. And given the time constraints, once that project is done, we're going to button it up, and we will be back after the next irrigation season.
That big pipe in the middle of the road there, is that Atmos' pipe?
Yes, sir.
So that's what's waiting to be installed?
Yes, sir.
Amy?
What is their timeline for getting that installed and out of the middle of the road? And what does the next year look like for those businesses if they are still in business?
So Leo can give an update. So once, regarding timeline, once they are done with this part of the project, everything should be opened back up for service until we have a chance to get in there later this year or early next year.
Atmos does not have a firm timeline yet. They attempted to install that pipeline just before Christmas, and they struck a water main under the street that was marked. They've made some repairs to that water main. It does still need more work, and they are working to get the railroad permit required to close the hole that they put under the railroad that hit the water main so that they can then put another drill under the railroad to pull that new pipe through. So it's very slow. They have not made any progress with the railroad as of last I had heard on Friday.
Do we have a way to compel them to move that? Do we have a way to compel them to move that pipe so that our businesses are not as significantly impacted as they have been for the past two months? If they have no timeline, no plan, no word of when they will hear back from the railroad?
Any ideas?
Maybe. Um, I, I'd need more information from him. I'd like to ask, not on the record in a public meeting. But yeah, we can definitely look at that.
We can have some further discussion around that.
And then also, would it make sense to perhaps combine Atmos' work into when we are going to have to be shutting it down again in the fall? Like, I just wanna see, like, how can we possibly minimize the impact to businesses and to residents of that area as much as we can, by all means practicable? Because they have put up with years of, of this. And I realize that none of this is through any fault, um, Director Evans of yours or, or the City Department. However, the reality is, is that that New Dry Cleaners is struggling, and the Humane Society is struggling, and the folks who live back there are struggling. So what, what can we do? Thanks.
I, I think the, the biggest challenge is that that work needs to be complete before we can start our work. And combining the two i- is essentially what we tried to do this season, uh, with them doing their work first and then us coming in afterwards. So we, we need them to get out of the way so we can complete our, our work. Um, and I think that what's probably best for, I mean, would be for them to get it done this year, and then we, we can button it up and have seven months or so of, um, access there for the, for those local businesses before we get back in there. Uh, Leo, do you mind talking a little bit about what our timeline looks like once we are able to get in there?
Sure. Um, we were intending to start our work on or around February 1st, provided that the pipeline had been relocated. In that sense, it would have taken us roughly two months to get all of the three storm pipes in under the railroad, taking us up to about April 1st, which is the date we had told them they needed to be done. So we ensured we were, had our pipes in the ground before the irrigation water came on, potentially as early as April 1st. Um, we have roughly six weeks after that worth of finishing the concrete headwalls and the concrete boxwork, uh, culverts just downstream of those after that. So we've got probably, I would say, three to four months worth of work once we get started. Um, if Atmos, you know, were to get done in the next month or whatever that timeframe is, we would look to start probably on December 1st of next year, and then be in place December, January, February of next year.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Ryan. All right, this time then I want to open the public hearing. It's introduction and first reading by title only, ordinance, let me get my glasses here, ordinance 01, series 2025, entitled, in ordinance of the City of Canyon City, approving an amendment to the Four Mile Ranch Plan Development District. The public hearing is now open, and I invite the city planner, Mr. Mal, Patrick, you've been waiting on the screen there quite a long time. Go right ahead.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this evening, we are asking that you continue this to a date certain in the future. Um, the, the applicant, uh, is in the process of revising some provisions of the development guide. And I understand the city attorney's office wants to have some conversations with the land use attorney for the applicant about those.
Thank you, Patrick. So then at this time, we would go ahead and ask for a motion to, you're, you're taking a deep breath, Ryan.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna suggest a date for the motion.
Okay. It says February 3rd. Is that, or we're not gonna?
We would, uh, ask for a motion to continue to March 3rd.
To March 3rd. Okay, would everybody please note that? So in a motion, we'll ask for continuation of the public hearing, and we're gonna ask for that continuation to March 1st?
March 3rd.
March 3rd?
March, the city council meeting on March 3rd.
How convenient. Amy?
Thank you. I just wanted to note that we did have a gentleman in our audience earlier this evening who had come, um, for this particular topic. We, um, gave him a little preview that he may not want to sit through all of this. And he requested, and I, I think, um, it's a very worthy request that I'm happy to, to pass along, that the city repost the signs, um, up there that note the new date of the public hearing for this particular motion. I'm not sure if that's already legally required. Um, but I would, um, I think that there is a, a great deal of interest by the homeowners up there, um, in this topic. And given that he did make the effort to come out tonight, um, I would ask that the city repost those notices with the updated date.
I was gonna ask, from a legal standpoint, what's the?
It's, it's not legally required, but it can be done.
We can do that. We will also make sure that we, uh, get it out on social media. We did, um, for this meeting, we did try to get it out that the, the hearing would be continued.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then I'd ask for a motion with regard to the new hearing date of March the 3rd. We'd like to take a shot at that. Emily?
I move, uh, that we continue the public hearing, uh, and a first reading and introduction of ordinance number one, series of 2025, to the March 3rd city council meeting.
Second.
Second, Amy, thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Could you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Schmisher?
Aye.
Stein?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Worthington?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hammack?
Aye. Well, thank you. Thank you, Patrick. Um, and necessary, and then step 11 is a discussion to authorize a city administrator to sign a personal services agreement with livable city studio for the Clock Tower final design. I'd invite the city administrator to comment.
Actually, I'm gonna ask Rick Harmon, Patrick Mulready, and Leo Evans to give a staff presentation.
And Brandy Sheets, our grand writer. Maybe, maybe more, we'll see. Having been involved with Clock Tower for some time now, um, Ryan asked us, and Leo thought it'd be a good idea too, to talk about more the background of Clock Tower Plaza, give a little history on where we stand, how it impacts projects, how it's been impacted by projects, and talk to some extent about the funding that's involved with some of these projects that, as they relate. Uh, so we'll talk a little bit about the vision, the planning, and, um, won't, won't be a long presentation. We'll, we'll get through these pretty quickly, so keep it, keep it short and sweet. Uh, the Clock Tower Plaza, we're gonna talk about this in terms of a few different things. Community planning effort, parking considerations, grant impacts, and then our consideration, how we are directed in terms of this project. Um, Clock Tower is, is a project that's been around quite a while. The project really began back in around 1999, prior to anything that's on here. Uh, incidentally, the, the city had, had authorized Clock Tower to be built or moved to Fifth and Main in 1999. There was a $200,000 CDOT grant that was awarded to the city to build the plaza around it. Um, city council at the time, and the community pushed back on it. City council decided to put it at where it is now, at Third and Main. And, uh, that $200,000 for CDOT had to be turned down, basically. And, um, not sure exactly what happened with that. I know there was some talk about wanting to save face, I guess you could say, with CDOT at the time. But it's, I found it interesting that we've been talking about Clock Tower for quite a while now. Um, and it's, it's a big part of our downtown. And it does impact or has been impacted by several projects. Uh, the three that we talk about the most in our community, in our economic development efforts and public works efforts, are the 2012 Downtown Strategic Plan, the 2017 Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan, and the 2017 Centennial Park Master Plan. Just about everything you see happening in our community other than 2A and probably roads is, um, tied to these plans. And Clock Tower is a very significant part of that. It's also pivotal for, um, obviously, the 2019 acquisition, the city purchase of property, and we'll go through some of these in more detail. Um, economic development initiatives early on, ideas for Clock Tower Plaza, and then Picture 20, Picture Canyon City, of course, is a comprehensive plan that references prior plans. 2023 Clock Tower Public Stakeholder Design Multimodal Master Plan, the New Method Laundry, um, 2025 Main Street and Third Street, and then the full design that we're talking about today, all impacted by, um, this project. Uh, the first being the col-, excuse me, the Downtown Canyon City Strategic Plan. This did not reference the Clock Tower. The plan to be, full disclosure, said nothing about the Clock Tower. It really set a tone for what they believed at the time, or thought at the time downtown should be like. That's where our bump outs came from. A lot, a lot of people love them, a lot of people hate them. Um, but that's where the bump outs came from. And it was really more about creating an experience downtown that was very pedestrian-friendly. Couple of points, points there, uh, they, they encouraged the Comprehensive Capital Improvement Plan, uh, that focused partially on increasing, improving the quality of pedestrian space within the Main Street corridor, and then improving the character and strengths of the business environment and accessibility to the southern, southerly portion of downtown, adjacent to Royal Gorge Boulevard, which is directly where this plaza comes into play. Uh, you can also see improved pedestrian wayfinding. And then, um, there's a reference to Central Square, a plaza downtown Central Square. That specifically referred to Macon Plaza. At the time, they were referring to Macon Plaza being a connector from residential communities to the north to draw people downtown. We have Clock Tower Plaza now that serves the same purpose, connecting Centennial Park and, uh, the train, for the most part, and US 50 to, uh, downtown. 2017, we had the Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan. I'm not showing an image here of this yet, but this is really just showing the stakeholder involvement. There were also public meetings. Um, there's been a lot of effort that's gone into determining, uh, a plan for the riverfront, a river corridor, and a plan for Centennial Park and connectivity to Main Street to downtown. Um, Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan was a pretty sizable project that had a lot of stakeholders, a number of public meetings. And then, of course, the Cent- Centennial Veterans Park Master Plan, that we affectionately call Centennial Park Master Plan. Same year, different process, same company, um, similar pro- process in terms of public feedback, stakeholder groups. Uh, and that came up with three options that we see over on the right, that really solidified the planning, the initial planning to connect Centennial Park to downtown. And that, that's where we identify Macon Plaza really as a key pivotal intersection and gathering space for pedestrians. Here we see the Centennial Park, it says Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan. Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan referenced this from the Centennial Park Master Plan. It's important to note here that there's two different versions of this drawing. One of them, in this, in this case, it shows the full pedestrian walkway between Centennial Park and Macon, or excuse me, and, um, Clock Tower, that would be closing down Third Street. There was another one in the Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan that actually recommended not closing down Third Street and move the pedestrian walkway to the west side of the street. Um, we are not, in terms of the Third Street improvements, talking about closing down Third Street. We're talking about a, a complete street concept in order to encourage and provide safe walking across the street. Um, but this is a little deceptive in that it talks about closing it down. But this is really the core of all of the work that was done at Centennial Park, um, a lot of the activity that's happening in Skyline Drive, and then the connectivity, and also the ICE plant, uh, John Paul Aries' desires to work with that property, and the connectivity to downtown. We also, oh, this, this gives you a little closer look at that, um, Centennial Park Plan, which references, uh, the Clock Tower Plaza being a Main Street portal to the river and the parks. And that actually over on the right shows a water feature or kids' play amenity. I didn't realize that was actually in the 2017 suggestion, uh, but that was in there as well. Uh, then in 2019, of course, the city acquired the property, and this was posted in the newspaper. This was from the Daily Record. It refers to the city, um, wanting this property in consistence, as consistence, as a consistent parcel for the Centennial Park and the downtown and the river plans. Uh, and it does fit very well into all of those. And then the property will remain as parking, but the council at a later date could consider other uses such as a plaza. And then, of course, Mayor Pro Tim Ashley Smith, uh, was talking more about the restrooms, public restrooms, as we have none downtown right now, and of course, uh, enhancing downtown experience. So, on to 2020, 2021. Picture Canyon City 2040, this is a comprehensive plan. Uh, this again references all of those plans that were adopted by city council, and consolidates them pretty much into future, um, recommendations and, and consist, or excuse me, recommendations for the community. And this again refers to that plaza up there in the top, and it refers to down on the la- on the right corner, uh, the corner Clock Tower, Third and Main Street, sits as an under, underused city-owned lot. Uh, the corner should be activated as a public, public multi-use plaza, offering a space for vendors, live music exhibits during special downtown events, features. Can't read the rest of that. On to 2021.
Can we ask questions throughout?
Sure.
Throughout?
Yeah.
On that previous slide, or, yeah, I think you have a picture from Picture Canyon City, uh, 2040, but I can't tell from looking at it, is, was it still showing the proposal to close off Third Street, or had we already moved away from that?
They, they used that image in the, in their, in the comp plan. They didn't make a recommendation specifically about that, I don't believe. I'd have to go back and review it specifically.
Councilmember?
I saw.
So, the, the, they used the image as Rick said, uh, but the recommendation was specific to Clock Tower Plaza itself. They felt that Clock Tower Plaza, um, at least in the, the context of the comprehensive plan, uh, was an important endpoint to connect Main Street to the riverfront.
Right, yeah, I think that's clear. I just wanted to be sure that, well, I'll just put it this way. I'm not hearing anyone at this point in time saying we should go back to the idea of closing off Third Street. So I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page on that.
Yeah, that is correct. We're, we're not making a recommendation to close Third Street.
Right, okay.
Why are we not working now? Moving along, uh, back in 2021, then, Tom Dixon, who was our, our Main Street program, program manager at the time, he and I worked on a concept. We have Clock Tower. What, what's the vision for Clock Tower? How should we, how, how, from an economic development perspective, could we, would we be interested in using it? And he proposed this concept of a village, Canyon Village, to city council at a vision committee meeting. And, um, the concept there was really more for retail incubation. You could bring in some container-type storefronts, so to speak. People that were creating their own wares could test them out on, in incubation space on, uh, Clock Tower Plaza. They could then graduate into retail space on Main Street. Some of that design concept, as well as the splash pad concept, as well as the bathroom concept, has all evolved then into the current, uh, design project, which, um, Patrick managed in 2023. You might need to move that little caption, that, uh, caption thingy there. But, uh, Patrick, you wanna talk more about the, the conceptual design?
So we underwent, um, as part of our RFP, we selected livable city studios to help us with, um, a conceptual design, creating a master plan for Clock Tower Plaza. What we did was form a stakeholder groups that involved, um, a, a group of neighboring property owners. There were several downtown act, um, advocates, um, who were interested in the project. And we also had a couple of council members. And at the time, our planning commission chair, Jerry Maloney, was on the stakeholder committee. There were about 15 members in total. So we had three stakeholder meetings overall. One at the kickoff, um, to begin sort of some blue sky thinking, um, you know, throw all of the possibilities out there, see what could potentially work, what clearly couldn't work, and sort of the ones that would be nice if, um, the, all those concepts. Um, and then, as part of this, we also wanted to engage in some significant public outreach. And then, as part of this, we also wanted to engage in some significant public outreach. So we conducted two surveys. The initial survey received over one thousand one hundred ninety-five responses, which for a city of Canyon City's size, was a remarkable response rate. And it was all very positive, very good feedback. From all of that, we were able to consolidate this into three design alternatives that we then took to an open house to, to show off. And this led to a second survey on these that received a slightly more modest four hundred and forty-seven responses, still very respectable. And then from those responses, they were all consolidated down into a final design that we had an open house via Facebook Live presentation to show the public, take comments from them during the Facebook Live presentation. And then we took the, the final design recommendation with whatever tweaks the public thought were important to both Planning Commission and council for approval. So that project took the better part of the first nine months of twenty twenty-three, all told.
Patrick, is it fair to say that we didn't yet have cost estimates surrounding what these options would run us during the online survey one and survey two?
We did not have cost estimates at the time. We were looking at how we would program the space primarily.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
Then, I think we need to replace a battery here. There we go. In twenty twenty-three, here's, here's the final design that was created, approved by council at the time. And you can see there's, there's, there's different pieces of what we talked about in the past. There's the open plaza there, there's a, there's a stage that's always been discussed as a possible place for entertainment, a kiosk for possible retail, or possible food, food service, and then restrooms down on the left. And another kiosk on the left there as well, it just got cut off in there. So, pretty creative. And this was what, fifty percent concept, conceptual design, basically? The whole idea was to take that then into the next full design, get some more funding potentially for that. And that's where we are today. But it was taken into consideration, into, it was taking into consideration the Third Street renovations, and also the bump outs that would eventually be coming on the three hundred block. We did talk about parking with that project. That was one of the concerns. It was brought up in the surveys as well, that we would be losing parking. The, the problem, not the problem with that, but the, the solution to that is we did at the time have plans to bring New Method down. We were in the process of trying to bring it down. And the plan initially with New Method was to take, take it down, figure out what we could do with it in terms of contamination. And we're still trying to figure out at this point what we can do with it in terms of contamination. Pave it, park it, turn it into a parking lot. And the city also acquired three sixteen, make it for additional parking. That gets us to potentially forty-four parking spaces, as you can see on the right. That's not the latest conceptual design for parking at the moment. But that's the one that we proposed at the time of the, of the, of the design project. And initially, when we were talking about demolition, talking to EPA, this is what we showed them for a concept for best use for a contaminated site at the time. You could, you, we could potentially have forty-four spaces. We would lose, the numbers between twenty twenty-four, as it stands right now, I don't, it's not an organized parking lot at the moment. So the number of cars you see in there varies depending on how people decide they want to park. There were some conceptual designs for parking for Clock Tower also. It showed some very limited mobility, movement through there. And I think one of them showed maybe twenty parking, organized angled parking spot, spaces. And then another conceptual design showed the east side of it more by the Clock Tower open and more like fourteen spaces or something like that. But I didn't, I didn't share that one on the, on their slides here. But we did get funding from the Colorado, the state divisional local governments. We had emergency funding that was used to help take down New Method, partially because, one, we needed it, partially also because the state wanted to make sure that any future funding possibilities that we had for, or future budget we had for Clock Tower could remain with Clock Tower, so that we can continue with the project for them. And Leo and Brandy can talk more about the future granting possibilities for this. Multimodal Master Plan also talks about this.
Jack, Manager Herman, I'm sorry. Could you remind me, we have ten years that we have before we have to develop the New Method site, right?
We have, I believe it's fifteen years we requested on that, primarily because we don't know the, am I correct in that? Do you remember that correctly? I'd have, I'd have to verify.
Yeah, I can't remember if it's ten or fifteen off the top of my head, but.
But there's that limitation where that's how long we'll have that for parking and then, or would have that for parking if this were to move forward before
Correct.
something else must be done with that.
Well, that, that was, yeah, we, we committed to that as long as there's not continuing monitoring. If there's continual attenuation of the, of the Brownfield site, it could go well beyond that.
Thank you.
And in the multimodal master plan, of course, it's, it's, there are, there are several plans that were created that reference this project and see it as an asset to the, to those plans as well, multimodal being one of them. And that was twenty twenty-four. The grant impact now, this is, this is some, this is why Brandy is here and why Leo is here with me. We did get twenty thousand dollars for the Clock Tower design, the initial Clock Tower design, the conceptual design process. That was a rather relatively low-funded project. Got some pretty good results for, for what we received in grant funding for that. But Clock Tower is pretty significant within our conversations with grantors for the projects that we have, because they want to see that we are building out the plans as they were proposed and accepted by council throughout the years. Clock Tower is a very significant part of that. So, as I mentioned during the New Method discussion, we did receive two hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars from, plus thousand dollars from the state, again, partially because of the possible need to pull funding or future budget, possible, future budget capabilities from Public Works for Clock Tower into New Method. So there was a little bit of protection there of the Clock Tower by its divisional local governments. US pedestrian, US fifty pedestrian crossing improvements, that's a direct tie to, also to Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan, Centennial Park Master Plan, and then also CDOT's US fifty corridor plan, all for the purpose of trying to get people across the street safely between the river and downtown. And then the third main bump outs, of course, Clock Tower was designed, conceptually designed, taking that into consideration, we already threw a bump out in that conceptual design. And then the three hundred, or Third Street connector, again, it was, it is being designed considering the eventual renovation or replacement of Third Street right next to it. So, from our perspective as staff, we can't do anything other than what is provided to us in terms of plans and authorizations by city council. So, community plans approved by council are what guide our budgets, our projects, our, our activities. And I said, as I said before, with the exception of two A and roads, the vast majority of what's happening right now in our community in terms of infrastructure is because of twenty seventeen Centennial Park, Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan, Downtown Strategic Plan, and then, of course, the US fifty corridor. So, it's council's will. But when we are approached to say, wouldn't it be great to do this? We don't have the authority to change any of that. So, that's, that's our, those are our marching orders. And we are here to take any questions that you might have.
Thanks.
Come on.
Yeah, not really a question, just appreciate it. It's helpful to see all this in terms of the history of the planning and the multiple plans that tie together in so many ways. And, and really, the, it's easy to forget the different puzzle pieces, whether it's the river, or Third Street, or Main Street and bump outs, or the Clock Tower. They, they all tie together, and that tie together is the planning that's done. And I'm a big fan of planning myself. I served on the City Planning Commission for six years when I was on council the first time in the eighties and early nineties. I also served twelve years on the Summit County Countywide Planning Commission. So, I became through all of those years a big fan of planning. And if, I, I mean, I'm just one who firmly believes that if you want to change what you're doing, you should do it through that same kind of a planning process. So, that's all I have.
When I was researching, well, not, didn't have to research much because I'm pretty aware of all of this stuff. But when I was putting together the PowerPoint and thinking about all the projects and thinking about all the conversations about everything involved, it's amazing how often the Clock Tower came up as supporting or justification, or, you know, it really was. And in terms of planning, you know, we talk about it all the time. We're trying to, we don't want to see plans sit on a shelf. We want to see, we want to implement those plans because they were, they were created for a reason by, through public input. And that's really what drives us. And I totally agree with you, totally agree with you.
Amy?
Thanks. Could you remind us the overall estimated cost of the Clock Tower project?
It was what, one point, one point?
I think it's one point three million.
I was gonna say one point three, yeah.
And then also, I know one of my favorite places in town is Macon Plaza, where you have the Carnegie Library and the old post office building. And I know the struggle that the city has had in trying to activate that plaza. What plans do we have in place for ensuring that the Clock Tower Plaza project would be active and lively and not contribute to some of the challenges that our downtown merchants face, but instead kind of be that place of vibrancy? And was it Canyon Village?
If, if that's, if that's what anybody decides to call it, yeah, yeah, Canyon Village.
But what are our activation plans?
Yeah, I think, you know, the, the idea of having those kiosks there and having some type of incubation system, whether it's retail or a food truck of some kind, you know, those are the, the key parts of it. And, you know, that, that's going to fall on our economic development team to try and recruit businesses for, for those types of developments. But, you know, having, having businesses there that's helped create some of that lively activity in that area and, and bringing it to life. And additionally, you know, we've, we've done, you know, prior years, the, the city participated in concert series and things like that. And, you know, trying to bring some of those types of things back to, to downtown and using that for downtown promotion.
I would also add that a lot of, a lot of the pedestrians we see coming up Third Street are coming from the train. And that's, and we, we see that a lot at the restaurants, Pizza Madness, Fremont Provisions, that there are people that come up from the train, waiting for their train, or they get here early. I would certainly want to work with the owners to promote that a little bit more. I also picture, and there's, this is nowhere budgeted, this is no, this is no discussion yet, but I also picture that being much more of a, a gateway entrance to the city. We're talking potentially about moving a lighted intersection down the First Street, but that Third Street corridor there could be a, a beautiful gateway from the train, where all that traffic is, into downtown to showcase that this is downtown one block up. Our wayfinding is there, I wouldn't say it's necessarily strong.
Sure.
I think that, that's, you know, one of the challenges that we see is, is that exact point. There's two hundred and fifty thousand visitors to the train every year. Most of them, you know, they, they take a right and head right back down Highway fifty. And, you know, the Third Street connector that we talked about tonight and the Clock Tower Plaza project, those are key, key projects to help draw traffic just across the highway and down to the downtown area.
I certainly hear you on that and, and certainly respect and admire Councilwoman Tracy's long dedication to, to service in our community and, and to the state. But I think, you know, I was re-reviewing some of our twenty seventeen plans in preparation for the conversation this evening. And I don't think any of them were anywhere near the one point three million dollar level of, of expectation. So I, personally, I just think that that's a little bit more than what, what our city should be spending on this type of project. And I think that it's, you know, funds that could be better spent elsewhere. I'm also just a little bit concerned, like, I, I love how much public engagement there was in the conversations around Clock Tower Plaza and in what that, what that should look like and what programming it should have. But without kind of the, the reality check of how much taxpayer dollars would be required in order to bring that vision to reality, I, I do wonder if some of that was a bit skewed. So, I would certainly be interested in public surveys that included both kind of the programming aspect as well as the dollar aspect, because I think that that can change folks' perceptions.
Andrea?
It might be helpful to, Brandon and I were just looking at that budget item, actually, which is budgeted at one point two, six hundred thousand is anticipated revenue from grants. So, city budget dollars right now is projected at six hundred thousand dollars. And then additional grant funding for six hundred thousand dollars.
Andrea? Andrea?
Okay, sometimes I think we just need to step back and look at the big picture. And I don't, this is a little bit of trivia that I'm sure people who've been on council way longer than me already knew this. But did you know we have the longest Main Street of all the smaller towns in Colorado, okay? We are going to have a renovation of the Old Depot at one end of the street, on the east end. And we're doing the street improvements on the west end. And our art center is going to be moving kind of in the center there, towards the east. So, it, we would have anchors, a reason for people. And we're going to be a state tourist center. We're going to have tourists coming to Ninth and Fifty, to that tourist center. Would be nice if there was something they could, you know, stroll down the street. There'd be a destination that they could go to. And we desperately need restrooms downtown. And I don't know, I, I have spent a lot of time downtown in the early hours on weekends. Because that's kind of when I sneak away and get to write at a coffee shop. So, and when I, the first time that I saw this, I couldn't believe it. At Third Street, clouds of people coming up from that train. And there was nothing for them there. They're coming up from the train, this may be their first time in Canyon City, and all they see is an empty parking lot. Wouldn't it be nice if there were a little more for them there? You know, maybe some kind of retail thing, and certainly restrooms. And, you know, most, a lot of, of the tourists on this train are old like me, and we need restrooms. If we're going to spend a couple hours downtown, you know, just browsing, maybe buying things, we need restrooms, and we just don't have them. Now, we will have them on the east end because there will be public restrooms as part of the, the new chamber space. But it just seems to me like we're, we, we're going to have that long corridor, and those will be anchors. So, sometimes you have to look down the road. And we, and we have this wonderful opportunity for grants to match what the city can do. And I talked to a lot of people and before tonight, just to get, to feel what, what people who live here feel about this. And so, a lot of people who did participate in the planning. And they're, they, you know, they're frustrated with all, you know, nothing ever happens. Nothing ever materializes there, and, and they, you know, they. and, and they, you know, they want to be involved, they want to help, but they don't, they just don't know, you know, where we're going with it. And, you know, so, I just think we kind of need a vision of what we want. And to me, with all the things that are happening that are great, you know, the art center is going to be on Main Street, which everybody said, "Oh, that was great to get them away from back where they were by the post office." They're going to be on Main Street. We're going to have the, the depot, the Chamber of Commerce, it's going to, and it's going to be the official state, there'll probably be signs out on the highway to bring people in. And so, then it'd be great if we had something on the west end. So, that's, that's just, I just, I wish more people could have come tonight, you know, that, that support this. But I'm just kind of trying to relay what, what they told me. Thanks.
Related to that comment, I mean, what we are, we are hoping that we can, we're anticipating being able to do this, put in fire lines on the 300 block for five, potentially five buildings, which will make those much more developable, and marketable, and upgradable for any potential restaurant, or any, any use that would require suppression systems. So, totally, totally, as an aside, but there's, there's a fair amount of work going into the 300 block, and upgrading the 300 block, and getting it more vibrant, because it's, it too, I mean, what the oldest, I mean, we're, the city was incorporated in one of the oldest buildings right there in the 300 block, that's beautiful building. And it's nice to see those changes coming. And I agree with Councilmember Schmisher about Macon Plaza. It's one of my favorite places. It's frustrating to, to have the struggles of activating it the way we do right now.
Kathy?
As the newest member of the Community Arts Committee, I think that this, you know, I'm, I'm looking at a map here on my iPad, because my eyesight's not that great to be able to, this is such a natural location for, for doing something like that. We're talking about having the tourist in the chamber at Ninth and 50. We're also, could very well, one of those kiosks could also be one of the tourism plate pieces, to hand out more information as people come up from the train, to see what else is downtown.
And that was projected in the plan.
Yeah, and it's, so, I just feel like, you know, I have waffled back and forth as to, okay, what about it? Should it be over? I respect what Aaron has mentioned, as far as his plans there for the dry cleaners, and I, I respect what he said, but every time I keep coming back that this is a very good location to try and accomplish what we want to for the city.
Thank you. Kathy? Amy?
I just wanted to flag that I believe Mr. Starica had wanted to speak on this, and that Mr. Maliko may have additional questions after seeing the presentation.
Mike's already talked.
He reserved his comments with regard to this agenda item.
Did he really? All right, then, come on. He'll be in my office tomorrow, don't worry about it.
If not tonight. Thank you again. I've heard several times tonight, people discuss the need for parking on Main Street, being one of the biggest problems of Main Street is parking. There was three designs. I don't remember seeing that design that was presented, that, what's proposed. But aside from that, personally, I think the Macon Plaza should be changed to a parking lot. I have seen as many as 20 cars in that lot, haphazardly parked, because there's no lines. And if you're looking to connect the River Walk, and the River Corridor, and stuff to Centennial Park, you're three blocks away from Centennial Park. Make some improvements in Veterans Park. There is restrooms in Veterans Park, if you're coming from the train. There's restrooms on the train, there's restrooms in the depot at the train, there's restrooms in the park at Third, in the Veterans Park. To put them another block away, doesn't make sense. The contract for this design work is $171,855.10. I think that could be better used to making that a parking spot, or parking lot, and using the rest of the money, I mean, I, I would guess $50,000 to level that and put a parking lot in. That'd leave you $127,000 to fix some roads, fix a pothole, do something else, but I just can't see another park that close to two others. And plans are made to be changed. I know these have been going on forever and ever, but that a lot of these plans were made prior to New Method. And, and I don't know that New Method's ever going to be done, I don't know if the cleanup is ever going to be done. I don't think there's even been a whole dug yet, to test the, for where the contamination is. So, that's my thoughts.
Any questions for Mike? Come on. No? Okay. Who's next? Brandon? No? Leo? Aaron? Go ahead. Then Amy.
The only thing I had to add is that, you know, there are bathrooms at Veterans Park, but as far as I know, they're still locked up and shut down, because they can't control the vandalism there. So, I don't see how this is going to be any different at, at Third and Main. And if we want bathrooms near the train, we ought to get a hold, a handle on the ones at Veterans Park. And also, I mean, I, you know, the earlier designs for Clock Tower Plaza did look like it made a lot more sense when, when it was a possibility of closing down Third Street, because it was just, it was just right there. But, and again, this was all before New Method came down. So, like Mike was saying, the plans are made to be changed, or at least considered, you know. And I understand that everybody's put a lot of work into this over a long period of time, but I think that we should think about it, because the, the parking lot that would go in where New Method is, it doesn't even line up with the parking lot behind it. You have, you have to go the wrong way down the alley to line up with it. It's just, the design for the parking lot at, at New Method is just, it's not a good one, from what I can tell. But that's all I had.
Amy?
Thanks. I also wanted to chat a little bit more about the bathrooms, so, thank you, Mr. Maliko, for bringing that up. What would the city's plan be? You know, there, in addition to the ones at Veterans Park, there are some of the worst ones that are kind of in between the train depot and the river. So, how would we ensure that these public restrooms would actually be able to stay open? And why would it be better to have them here, rather than mid-block, or kind of mid-Main Street corridor, down where New Method is? Thanks.
One of the challenges we would have with New Method at this point is the inability to dig, to put restrooms there. We don't know yet, we're not going to know for a while, when, when we can do that. We know, we do know the contamination level under the building, we did, we did some drilling in there. We know it's pretty low in the ground, but we don't know at this point yet, whether we can put bathrooms in there or not. So, I guess in terms of the bathrooms, it's a big question mark, whether we could or couldn't at this point.
Yeah, as far as bathrooms at the Clock Tower, I think, you know, the, the final design had them in there, I think there were still some questions about the bathrooms. You know, one of the--
Ryan? Ryan? One of the concepts that was introduced in that final concept was that these bathrooms would have kind of an electronic lock on it, that if you had a credit card, and you were willing to pay a nominal fee of 25 or 50 cents, it would be open to you. And that was a method of providing access, but not full, full complete access all the time.
Yeah, that was one of the things that we talked about. We also talked about, you know, if you have vendors in the, in the space, having some type of access granted by the vendors, with, you know, whether it's a code, or something along those lines. So, I, I think there's still a lot of discussion regarding the bathrooms.
I do think bathrooms are a challenge, no matter where. And there was talk about the activity level there, if, especially if you have some kind of a retail tenant there, the activity level there would keep, would be more likely to keep, using my terms carefully here, vandalism, we'll call it vandalism, more likely to keep that at bay. And we, we did talk more about having police presence downtown. I'm not sure where that is. We talked about patrols downtown.
Yeah, at one point--
Periodically.
Yep, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. At, at one point, we had talked about potentially having a, a police outpost there at Macon Pla, or not Macon Plaza, Clock Tower Plaza. We're currently working with the Chamber about doing the outpost there at the new Chamber building. So, you know, there's, you know, there's still a lot of moving parts there.
Am I understanding you correctly, that it's not certain that there will be public bathrooms at Clock Tower Plaza?
I think that was, as Patrick stated, that was the final, that was what was in the final plan, but I, you know, we, we can change that if that's the desire of council.
No, I thought you had just said that we may or may not have public bathrooms at Clock Tower Plaza.
I, I think some of the feedback that we got from, from some of the, the local businesses, I, I think there was, there was a little bit of a 50/50 on that, whether or not there should be bathrooms there.
Help me.
Yeah. I, I think it's, it's more along the lines of what Patrick was suggesting. If, if you're going to have bathrooms there, it probably is going to need to be some type of controlled access of some kind. It's not just going to be an open public bathroom, similar to what we, what we see at the parks.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. I would be even more hesitant to, to spend that kind of money if it didn't even garner public bathrooms on Main Street. So, thanks for clarifying.
Emily?
Thanks. I, I had emailed a question earlier about the potential, or maybe it's a reality, of fuel tanks under the ground at Clock Tower. So, can we say a little bit more about what, how that might, the knowledge that there's something there, how that might impact timing, grant applications, all of those kinds of things?
Yeah. Just to share with everybody else, we do know that there's hydraulic equipment, potentially hydraulic equipment, under the ground there. The Phase 1 that was done on the Clock Tower did not, did not show that there are tanks down below, but the State Division of Oil and Public Safety has a record of tanks being in there, gas tanks in there, and they have a record of them being filled and abandoned, basically, by OPS standards. But there's no certification anywhere that says that was actually done. So, we do have money left in our multipurpose grant right now. We are potentially doing a Phase 1 for a, a business owner on Ninth Street. If that business owner's not interested, we could do a Phase 2, potentially on Clock Tower. We've also had conversations with the state, CDPE, about Clock Tower. It is not, right now, since we have not gone through the assessment process, it's not part of our, our cleanup grant application. However, the state is much, is very willing to take on projects on our behalf, if that needs to be the case. And one of the conversations we had about the tanks and the hydraulic equipment is during a Phase 2, the EPA doesn't say it publicly, but similar to the New Method laundry building, it was taken down as investigative derived waste, in order to remove the building, to investigate the ground underneath it. You can do the same, potentially, with tanks. So, we could realistically, realistically conduct a Phase 2, pull the tanks out to test the ground underneath them, and the same with the hydraulic equipment. I would anticipate, we were talking about it today, actually, the state is anticipating a new contractor coming under contract within the next couple of months. I, I will be making sure that any assessment and potential cleanup comes alongside the design, so that there's no slowdown in the future. We've talked about it with EPA and CDPE on a number of occasions, so they're very aware of it. And I actually included it in the narrative of the, of the cleanup grant, even though they won't provide money for cleanup for it, because it wasn't that far. So, we anticipate it not being a challenge to get through it, and I don't think it's going to take all that long, and it can be done in parallel with the design.
Thanks.
I'd just add that the professional service agreement, that's part of this agenda, has a Phase 2 component built into it, that, that vendor would provide a Phase 2 as a part of those design services, so that the design they develop can be evaluated specifically for that site, to see what the, the conflicts and the needs are.
Any more questions?
It's relatively minor, but I noticed in the proposal that it states that they will be using non-recirculating water for the water feature, and I wanted to inquire as to why, given our current water situation here in the West.
I believe that came out of the stakeholder meetings. That was a request of the stakeholder meetings, to have it be a non-recirculating system. The recirculating systems require a lot of staff effort, time, because they have to be treated as a community pool, and they have to be tested every day, if they're the kind of features that people are, you know, playing in, like the splash pad. A fountain, like at Veterans Park, we don't have to do that for, but if people are going to be in contact with it, we have to treat it like a pool, and live up to those standards. So, recirculating requires that, and non-recirculating doesn't require us to do as much testing and effort on that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's try and conclude. And as, so, we, I would ask for, if you want to make a motion, to go ahead and make a motion, then have a second. Emily?
Yes, I move that we authorize the city administrator to sign a professional services agreement with Livable City Studio for the Clock Tower Plaza final design. Second.
Second. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call roll, please?
Councilmember Maloney.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Nay.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hemrick.
Aye.
Okay. Final thing on the agenda is to move into an executive session to discuss further actions. So, shall we adjourn to the anteroom? Is that the appropriate way of doing it?
Need a motion and a second.
So, need a motion? And a second. Someone make a motion.
Is the motion the script, or this is just a motion to go into--
To go into session, executive session.
I'll move that we move into executive session.
Second.
Motion's been made, and a second, any discussion on that?
For the, sorry, for the purposes stated on the agenda, if you don't mind.
Yes, I lost that page somewhere.
Can I amend? So, I move, I move, move into executive, ah, there it is. Session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy of negotiations, and to instruct negotiators regarding negotiations related to an intergovernmental agreement for a community recreation pool pursuant to CRS 24-6-4024E.
Does everybody understand that motion? Thank you. And so--
Second.
And it was been seconded? Did Emily, did you have? Okay. Call her all. Quickly.
Councilmember Maloney.
Aye.
Schmisher.
Aye.
Stein.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Worthington.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hemrick.
Aye.